Roll call for the planning commission. Chairman Peeble, I'm here. Vice Chairman Darlin.
Here.
Secretary Anita Strib.
And I'm here.
Kenneth Howard.
Here.
Mr. Turner. Daryl Nichols.
Here.
And Leroy is present. All right.
Do you want to do a roll call for this board?
Yes.
Oh, sure. Can you run with Kenny Turner?
Um, excuse me, before the board goes any further and gets into any muddy waters, the joint meeting, the special meeting, public posting was not posted correctly. Therefore, if you move forward as a joint meeting, then you could be getting yourself into some legal ramifications, whether it be both individual or the township as a whole. The public hearing was posted, it was, I'm sorry, the public hearing was published in the paper as, and that can move on. There's no problems with that. It's the special meeting, the joint meeting, that was not posted correctly. It- The clerk put it on the webpage and all they did was alter the public hearing notice as a joint meeting. That doesn't follow the requirements for the special meeting publications or the special meeting postings as required by the Open Meetings Act. So if you-
What was the requirement? What's the requirement then?
The requirement is it's posted as a special meeting. You cannot combine both notices. You cannot, now see, if the clerk had taken the public hearing notice as it's posted on the website right now, where it says joint meeting, and actually published that in the paper, that might fly just under the radar of the illegal. That might fly. However, a special meeting, a joint meeting, needs to have its posting. And if you look in your red book, which I'm sure many of you have, page 141, top of the page, it says the requirements for the special meeting posting. I'm just saying, if you decide to move forward, you can face legal ramifications as a board, as a township.
Can they be here?
They can be here as citizens.
They can definitely be here as citizens. However, I do recommend that none of them say anything, only because that could be construed as persuasion of the planning commission regarding the large solar orders.
Well, that was the original plan, was we, somebody made the comment at last month's board meeting, that maybe the full board should be here to be part of this. And so they went to the trouble to be here. And I thought that if they show up and they don't tell the public that they're here as a group, then they could get in trouble of, uh-
Open meetings, I think.
Yep, of being five people together.
That, that's correct. They should all separate.
Was it, was it so promotion that it can be here? I mean, for the joint special meeting, was that published in?
In the meeting minutes.
Would it have to be published in the news, just like the joint?
No, the special meeting would not have to be published in the Monroe Evening News. It would have to be posted. There's a difference between published and posted. It has to be posted within eighteen hours of the schedule of the meeting. However, like I said-
Yeah, I did it.
No, like I said, the public hearing notice itself was altered. It was not a specific special meeting notice. There shouldn't have been the public hearing notice and a special meeting notice. Or back when the public hearing was published, you could have said that.
Well, yeah, but-
He can talk.
For the sake of, of, yeah, for the sake of what she's talking about, so there's nobody, the families in a bunch, they could just put themselves in the middle.
That was extremely unprofessional of him. Extremely unprofessional of him. That was an unheeded comment.
All right.
I'm sorry, I don't feel that following the letter of the law to he is-
Let's continue on.
Yeah.
We've done what you asked.
I, I recommended that they make documentation that the entire township board is here as residents to listen to the discussion. And there's no doubt in that. And then please don't say anything, because our people in this room sued the township in previous situations over this very issue.
Exactly. I don't want to see that.
All right. Let's see approval of the agenda, guys. Any questions? Why we've got it the way we do? Questions, comments, and looking for a motion to approve?
I'll make questions after the agenda is presented.
I, I got a question.
Okay.
Before we vote on that. This agenda right here, that's got the board of trustees listed on here for a roll call.
It does.
Is that the, I would, I would like to see that amended to take off any of that as a roll call.
All right. I have a motion to, mine shows a roll call for the trustees. Leroy added his motion.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Collins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. We all have a copy of the meetings, or the minutes from our last meeting in front of you? Have a chance to go through them.
We continue the February seventh meeting minutes.
Yeah. Okay, motion, Chairman Darlin, suggested by Mr. Turner. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? All right, that brings us to our first citizen's time. And if I may, this is a public hearing for solar, so if you got something else for the first citizen's time, then be fine.
Mr. Chairman, could we have the people that stand up? I would like to know their address. I would like to know-
Absolutely.
Their name, and make sure that they have a two-minute time limit.
No, two for the citizens. Oh, I'm sorry. Two for citizens' time, three for the public.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
I say something.
Okay, you got two minutes.
Two minutes, they don't want to take them now, I think just one hundred anyway. William Rudeski, 13008 Towns Road, half the people know me, half you do not. I just want to say thanks to board out there, because everything's going on pretty good here in the township, since we got rid of Amanda and Gary. Everything's going pretty good out there. And, 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 by the way, I'm glad the cops ain't here, because she'd probably be calling cops on me anyways. Ain't that right, Amanda? You have a good day there. Oh, can I call you sweetheart?
Yeah.
You have a good day. You know what? You have a lovely year.
And maybe we should have had a box of them.
And you gotta get off the board, and now, now, now you know the glove, beforehand you got your one.
All right. Is there anybody else? Mr. Westergaard.
Good day, everybody. Yes, I'm Sean Westergaard. I live on Olson Road. You should know me, to those of you don't. I live on Mark Betterby's place. My land order, thirty-seven eighth pond project, on both east and south. I was here in January, and I said I wanted a berm to separate this thirty-seven eighth pond project from my property, since I'm directly to the east, and it's going to be really dusty and noisy, and it's going to last for at least twenty years. And in January, no one seemed to have a problem with it. When I was here in February, it was a different story. And I didn't get a berm from the planning commission. And someone at some point asked me if my house was completely surrounded by trees, and I said no. And Mr. Turner corrected me and said that yes it was, that he had been there. My phone, I've got pictures taken from my patio, and it's directly to these across Ed's property and at the Roots Farm. If anyone wants to look at it, please raise your hand, because I probably won't be staying for the whole township meeting. Mr. Turner also said that my house was far enough away from the property line. And as you can see from this picture, I'm going to get the wind blowing directly on my house from the west. Mr. Turner also said that it would be too expensive for Ed Gerode to put in berm. Uh, anybody can watch the meeting from last month. It's posted, and he did say that. And in my opinion, Mr. Turner sounded more like an advocate for Gerode trucking than he did for the township. And I wonder if it's because he's actually married to the daughter of Ed's longtime girlfriend. And I wonder if the chairman could tell me how that's not a conflict of interest, especially in light of the fact that it's been Mr. Turner who was to approve both of Ed's last two excavations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I got a, I got a question.
If you may.
Mr. Westergaard, how long have you lived at, that, where you're at now?
I moved in, I bought the house in June of 2018, and I moved in in August.
Oh, this is the 2018?
That's when I moved into the house.
Okay.
I acquired the pole barn and the ponds in December of 2019.
Was, so, were those ponds done when you moved into that house?
No, they were not.
So you were having ponds dug on your property?
No, sir.
Well, wait, I, I just, wait. Were ponds being dug on the property that you bought in June and moved in in August? Were ponds being dug? That's a yes or no question?
No.
So the ponds were complete?
No, sir. I didn't know the ponds at that point. Thank you. There are no ponds on the original seven acres that I bought when I made it in 2018. I didn't acquire the ponds until 2019 in December.
And the ponds were completed when you?
No, they weren't.
Oh, the ponds were not completed when you bought them?
They're still not completed, as far as the township is concerned.
Was there a berm in between any of your neighbors and yourself?
Public township.
Yeah, yeah. We got your points, too. We noted it, Mr. Westergaard. Is there anybody else?
So that, so I don't get an answer on whether that's a conflict of interest?
This is public comments.
Oh, I see. Thank you. What's, what's the last two meetings calls?
All right. Are there any other citizens' comments?
Hey, Matt, I'm just wondering about the updated on Mylan Drive Way. Where are we sitting on that?
I can actually speak for that. I know that they, the engineer was supposed to send the site plan early this week. As of 3:30, when I was leaving, and so was our ZA. It had not been sent to us yet.
They have assured us that they plan on getting their approvals before anything happens. I know they've published a events calendar, and the events calendar is put out there to try and get people thinking about coming back there. And if they don't make their first event, which obviously they won't now, they're fine with that. They just wanted to get some things done, so we could get on the schedule, so to speak. But they plan on being in full compliance before they run.
Hey, well, that address is low, like, how many events they can have, or hours, is that included in our site plan?
Site plan is going to be set up. They're planning on running pretty much like it was before, doing some upgrades and maintenance. And we'll know when we get it.
Like it was before, where there, there were no rules.
Wow.
My concern, so I'll keep that in mind, please.
Okay. Very well. Anything else? All right.
Hey, I'm Blackwood. I live 101, 24 Grand. Understand this meeting is about solar and wind power?
When we get to it.
The city is being built in this community? I would only want to state, are these our only two choices? I mean, I, I'm failing to see the relevance of solar and wind power. You know, we're, we're trying to move way into a green economy, and yet, we want to fill up our land with giant windmills? Where the blades are, what, virtually indestructible, non-recyclable, sixty gallons of oil to a machine? Really? This is what we want to bring into our community? We got a quarry to that, it's behind my prop. We're just going to dig rocks. It worked out really well, didn't it?
All right. Thank you.
I just think we need more options.
Very well. Anything else for citizens' time?
Hello, my name is Kent Casper. I live at 764 Jackson Lane. I really do support this project. And there are so many reasons I think we all should. And I don't want to be preachy. I thought your comment was great, I really do. But I think clean energy in terms of wind and in solar are some of the best options that we have. They solve so many problems here within our community. They create jobs, they create taxable opportunities, and they help us with the impending climate issue. I know those issues sometimes people turn into political issues, but they're not. I think it's small, but I think these are opportunities for us to do things for our kids, for our grandkids. And like I said, these kinds of energies, I worry that we are looking for something that is perfect. And this is as close to it as we get. If we could do away with dependence on other forms of energy, nobody owns the sun, folks. Nobody owns it. Okay? So I, I, what I, I don't want to be is, is, is-
All right.
Yes. So that's what I'll say.
We're going to have a public hearing about solar in a while. Where'd you say you were from? Jackson Lane is where?
764 Jackson Lane in Mylan.
In Mylan, okay. Thank you. All right. Seeing none else, I'd like to get on to our unfinished business. We have a zoning ordinance that needs just a little attention. Leroy, if you would, please take the helm and explain what we've done here.
Okay, the planning commission and the township board have a document that says Article One, Section 109, questions.
Violation and penalties.
Yeah. I stapled five pages together for the board. The last three pages are the ordinance we have, and as we went through them over the years. If you look at the third page, the last one that was enacted, to my knowledge, is these Article One, Section 109, penalties and enforcement. At the, at the London Township Board minutes of May 10th, 2021, I was trying to understand which ordinances we have totally enacted. The township or planning commission have been working on four different ordinances. We think we get one solved, and then it comes back to us. We get another one solved, it comes back to us. So I was trying to understand that, whether they were totally finished with the proper procedures in place. At this May 10th, 2021, I put excerpts in there about the ordinance in there. And I underlined for the board a part that said, previously adopted de-void. This is in a response to our previous ordinance enforcer, or whatever, that was helping us work. Evidently, he didn't go back far enough and read everything we did. So following that, I have documented here Leroy's records. And I show you the procedure we went through on the planning commission, and on the following page, it will show you the document, the meeting that the township board approved it. Now, the problem here is, back on your May 10th, 2021 minutes, you cannot change an ordinance or rescind something by just an action of the board. You, once it's been adopted, you have to either go back through the same procedure to reverse it, or you have to change the minutes that you said previously adopted de-void. Now, we spent a lot of time on that document, trying to decide the proper process. Of course, Doug Darling can explain to the process, because he was totally involved with the attorney. I wasn't involved with the attorney when we were going through this. The attorney also sent our penalty document explaining the process, too. So I don't think we have to do, we as a planning commission don't have anything to do. I think the township board, at their, whatever time they decide to do that, has to handle this motion that was enacted on the May 10th, 2021 meeting. To see, you were out here at this meeting, you get the information upfront. I don't think we have to do anything tonight. We have to hear directions from the township board when you, when you get into session. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention.
All right.
I stripped across it, and this caused a lot of grief, both ways, so Doug wanted to-
You want to hand it to Doug?
You understand how quickly that, you were stood at the recommendation of the township attorney, which was Conley Prossley at the time, that because of the number of cases or things that they were trying to challenge in court, that the zoning administrator was trying to do, the ordinance enforcer, that because of the difference between a civil infraction and a misdemeanor, by going for misdemeanor, it cleaned up and sped up the process in which she could pursue something or defile things in court. The other way was much more cumbersome, and she had sent it to the township supervisor at the time, and she was having challenges trying to understand it, so kindly sent it directly to us. We then presented it all to the township board, so everybody had the documentation, and what her written-out narrative was, and that they got filed, that's about four years back with my stack of stuff. But that's, that's what led to that change, and the township's board, or planning commission, then did change that, and then the board did approve it, back five years ago.
It was just information, Mr. Chairman, so they had the copies, so we got to get directions from the township board.
All right.
Thanks.
Well, I see no need for a motion here. I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. That's what happens when things get scattered out so far.
And we recommend to have the township attorney review that, make sure something hasn't changed in some statute, some state law in the last five years, that maybe it's time that we have to change it again, or to prove the fact because of some change in the law at some point, and so if we're going to go through this process, have the attorney also look at it.
Mr. Nichols, you have that note to take to the board for us?
I, I absolutely do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions on the planning commission on that? Makes sense, I think, so. All right. But nothing else? So I hear a motion to open the public hearing.
Who supported it?
Leroy opened it. And Doug supported it. Going to ask everybody to stay to three minutes, so that we can kind of keep some semblance of order to this.
Also, if you don't mind me, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
But if you could come up and spell your name, or print your name with your address up on the podium would be very helpful.
Yeah.
For the matter of fact.
If you do not want to come to the podium and write your information down, speak it out loud, so we know who you are, where you're from, what township, et cetera. So.
And I need to have to do the timer, so.
Huh?
Anita asked me to do the timer, since she's taking notes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Very good, so. All right, we got a motion in a second. All in favor of opening the public hearing?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion's carried. Welcome to London Township.
My name is Mary Hannah. I live at 10030 Henry Road in maybe London Township. And I don't want to really de-date, you know, the pros and cons of solar power, because there are pros and there are cons. But what I'm looking at is the draft ordinance, and it's a good start, I believe. But I don't see anything in here about applying with all applicable local, state, and federal regulations, including the environmental regulations. I'm a retired environmental engineer, I work with permitting. And most ordinance that I have seen do include, you know, maybe not all of the references, but it just says at least applicable rules and regulations. And of course, the local ordinance can be a little more stringent than your state and your federal. But specifics are such as, on page five, section O, it talks about substations. It doesn't really talk about, you know, if they've evaluated, if they need to evaluate, evaluate whether the existing substations are adequate. There's another one here at the top of page six, where it talks about when they restore the site after the end of life of the facility. There again, it should state, and of course, with all local, state, and federal regulations, because it talks about restoring it to, you know, the previous state, but it doesn't talk about, you know, what type of testing has to be done, what the limitations are, because those are all specified in the Michigan State regulations. I think that should be incorporated by reference at amendment. And at page seven, this is not necessarily related to environmental regulations, but subsection V, talking about roads and having them repaired, doesn't have any timeframe specified. And if they damage a road, we can't live with a damaged road for a year, or two, or three, because they're going to have a lot of heavy construction equipment. And there was one other thing here. It was about the noise ordinance. Talking about sixty-five decibels is the limit. And I assume that's the operating limit. But I believe that during construction and deconditioning and anything using heavy equipment, there are also decibel limits. I don't know what those are offhand, but I think those should be specified in the ordinance, that during construction, decibel limits shall not exceed.
OSHA's got those things.
So by reference, OSHA should at least be incorporated. And because not everybody's familiar with it, my opinion is that it should be included in the ordinance.
Okay.
Can you give a need in your phone number for future reference?
Yes, please.
Sure.
From Augusta Township, where we are going through this, just had the denial done at our meeting for the large-scale solar application, that they went through that. They have developed a solar policy up there, a large-scale solar policy, that they discovered was woefully inadequate at the end. And we've been able to extract at least nineteen additional points on the, with the solar company that we, they were negotiating with. And amongst them, a couple that have not been thought about or weren't, was when they leave, basically, the plan was to cut, pull out the poles, and to leave everything else underground. That, the use for farmers, it's quite a problem when you're leaving the cables under the ground. It didn't, wasn't something that you wanted to do, but that was something that we were able, even though it was denied ultimately, to get a concession for. Setbacks for the people that did not participate were expanded to, I believe, five hundred feet, where they started out at seventy-five. Pretty much universally, I was also involved in York Township, where I have property in both of these townships. That it was the same thing discovered over there at their meeting with what, our policy opened the door for them to come in. And once we allow it over here, it's very hard to limit it to where we wanted it to be. They started out in Augusta Township, it was start- It was start kind of with the concept that it was gonna go on to industrial, light industrial property. And they have one already approved that is for that. And I was part of a group that was not happy when they were gonna put it around our property and my property specifically, three hundred and sixty degrees. And really had made the opportunity to reach out to the farmers, which I'm sure they already have here in the larger, years ago, to the larger, why you're here in the first place is because they've already dealt with them, but left the little guy out. And not, and it kind of ended up pitting the farmers initially against the residents. And it's not about that, that we, farmers have their rights, but the residents do too. Really, one of the the major points we had, and there was, they provide studies in about everything, the sound, the pretty much all the concerns you have, they'll have a study that they paid for that will show you that that's not the case. Home values is one of them. Your home value, it's undeniable if you're, you know, to me, I make my dollars on buying some property. I know that if you surround myself with solar panels, my property is gonna be worth less. That was never adequately addressed. The harmonious nature, one of the lines I don't own your policy, it was it needed to be harmonious with the surroundings. You know, that's who, that's who can decide what is harmonious or not? I certainly did not think it was harmonious. Our project that they were talking about was about four hundred acres. It included four hundred thousand solar panels, sixty-five thousand pilings, four miles of beds around the property, and who knows how many miles of cable? And there was no sunset on the, on it. There is no, the person that's ultimately gonna own this is gonna be DTE. Whoever is starting out, they're gonna sell it to DTE. They're gonna be fixing this the whole time along and replacing panels. And although you talked about twenty years and that's what you get to hear, once it's here, it's not going away. The the panels are gonna keep getting maintained and it will be there in perpetuity. Thanks for your time. And actually.
Thank you.
Talked to someone at the township up there. They have a lot of good ideas, more specifically in their their policy, it would be a really good idea to see what is your solar ordinance look like up there.
Go ahead.
Alan Winderman, I'm from Island Township. And all this, what I want to say here, go with Island Township as well as other township. I believe this project is way, way too big for our small-town government. And I, and I think the developer knows that. We, we don't have the engineers to watch what's happening on the payroll. We don't have site managers to be out there every day to make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be following. That developer has one responsibility, and it's not to the township, it's not to the neighbors, it's not to the landowners, it's to their investors. It's the only responsibility that that developer has. Why wouldn't they look ten miles down the road here? We got a landfill. You can throw a fishing line from the entrance of that over a grid line. Why not put it on the top of a landfill? Bingo. You've got all kinds of ground over where the old Dundee cement used to be. You could put it all together, wouldn't have to bore underneath twenty-three. Why aren't they doing that? They don't want to deal with corporate lawyers. Because all that ground that I'm talking about is in a corporation.
Thank you. Don't be shy.
I'm not shy. Everybody knows me. My name's Aruda Field. I live on Wells Road. I gave you quite an extended list of things that I think is wrong with the ordinance. Well, not only me, several people do. The setbacks are too short, the screening is not adequate, the decommissioning needs to be addressed more. I think I gave you about ten or twelve things I didn't even bring it with me. And so if you want to read it, fine, like I said, I didn't bring it with me.
I haven't, you can read it if you would like.
No, I'll go over the three minutes you can read. I'm a fast talker, but.
I have it. No, I, you can read it. If you would like to.
You wanna get that for me? Says, any land enrolled in PA one sixteen should not be allowed to have solar, even though the state says it can. It is not a law, but it is a policy. PA one sixteen was passed to preserve farmland. Solar panels are not crops. Farmers were given tax breaks to promote farming, not solar fields. Setbacks are way too lenient, should be three hundred feet from vacant lot lines and at least a hundred feet from drains, plus five hundred feet from occupied property lines and roads. Solar panel allowance at twenty feet is way too high, fifteen feet should be plenty. Also, the substation, now I've misread. I thought they were allowing the substation to be a hundred feet tall, not just the wiring. So I was imagining this ten-story building in the township. So I think you need to make that idiot proof because I totally misread it. So, solar projects should not be exempt from lot coverage. Why should the citizens of London Township have a stricter rule than the solar people? Require bee-pollinated vegetation to be planted throughout the facility. Require mowing outside the perimeter of the facility. Require cash escrow instead of bond for decommissioning. Because of inflation, it should be reviewed every one to two years and added to if necessary. How do we know what the cost of decommissioning is going to be thirty years from now? I don't think I put the thirty in there, but twice a year inspections should be done by independent inspector company, qualified, trained in solar energy equipment. Inspections to be paid for by the solar company. There's, this should be in addition to the local inspectors inspections that are required. Require evergreens at least seven foot high around the perimeter and staggered two rows deep so you can't see the fence. Native trees usually shed their leaves, so that means every winter we get to look at the solar panels.
That's the three-minute mark.
All right.
You want us to do the future?
We've got a copy.
Well, you got a copy, you're right.
Got a copy of that.
Yeah, I gotta figure that out, hold on.
Almost made it. Almost made it.
If I had looked at the beginning, I would have made it.
That's right. We're granted the extra thirty seconds to get it to you. All right. Who wants to go next?
Can I give him my three?
Yeah.
He can have my three minutes.
Oh, no, that's all right.
I'd be glad to give them to you.
They have, they have it.
You're speaking very eloquently and much in approval.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll take his three minutes. Hopefully, I won't be as windy. The master plan should be reviewed before the finalization of the solar ordinance. How does this fit into the master plan? Does it promote rural character? What is rural about solar fields? Solar panels belong in industrial areas. God, it is, it is more in line with the areas set aside in the master plan for such developments. There should be something in the ordinance about tile maintenance. That many years of no maintenance to the field tile is going to make it revert to the flooded areas that it was in the beginning. And you guys changed the wording in eleven oh point oh four A to include industrial research, but you did not change it on page one. Forget what paragraph. Also, on page one, section one, and on page five, eleven point oh four N. So if you're gonna change it one place, you need to change it all because it's gonna leave it open, but then the wheel will crack your hands in there. And then as, as a thing said, as the PS, I said, please don't give me this crap about not wanting to tell landowners what they can and can't do. You tell us every day what we can and can't do with our ordinances. We can't put some things in some areas. There are building requirements, lot requirements, yard requirements, fence requirements, screen requirements, and so on and so on. So please don't talk down to us and tell us you're not gonna tell us what to do. Okay. I made it in the second three minutes. Thank you.
I wanted to make sure you could read everything that you had in the email, so.
Yeah, I did, so I read the, the PS too.
Yes, say it again.
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you.
Come forward, please.
John Tomlinson, I live over on Home Road. Next door, they want to put the Billy Power. I want to tell you right now, I'm against it. And I don't know if you people know about anything about what happened around Myland back in nineteen sixty-four. Mike Martin Marietta bought two thousand acres of farmland just east of the prison. They took down all the buildings, all the houses, moved them out, put a cement plant in there. They dug a big quarry, they hit an underground river, they lost the seafree, couldn't get out there fast enough. Wayne Disposal took that property over and made a dump out of it. They put hazardous waste in there. It's still there. It's a mess. The farmers can't farm over there because all the, all the old clay tile have all collapsed. They, they get stuck again. Well, what I'm getting at is they just made a complete mess on a two thousand acres of beautiful farmland. That's my point with this solar panel. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm here, I live over on Old Stranger. I was at one meeting and I asked the question, who paying for it? Is it gonna be snuck in our taxes? And I asked the guy, I said, you gonna put it in writing? And they wouldn't answer my question. Is our house value gonna go up or down? Going up. And I asked him, are they gonna put it in writing? He said, he asked, oh, what's your question over here?
We're both on Old Stranger, are you?
Structure that hasn't been built on taxpayer money. And you pay for it again and again and again and again and again. Are you gonna sneak in our taxes and shit?
Say it again. Where'd you, where'd you say you are on Old Stranger?
One five seven nine one, Old Stranger.
Okay.
But I, I like, I like to see the guy that, like, they'll take that company, put it in writing that it ain't gonna be put in our taxes. And our house value ain't gonna go down the rock because of this bullshit.
Right.
Hi, my name is Ferdinand Miller. I'm a county commissioner from Lapeer. I'm actually here on a separate business though with the Land and Liberty Coalition. The reason I decided to stop by is I heard you guys were putting this together. You guys want to get some expertise from people who have actually had solar. We in Lapeer County have actually had solar now for the last five years. I can tell you, no public funds were used in the building of these. This is all private equity. And I can also tell you to the brownfields question, why they don't put these on brownfields are wasted, take that with the federal government because the federal government's ridiculous and their restrictions as well. I don't care about climate issues. That's not a big issue for me. I care about farmers, I care about property rights, I care about energy prices. And what we do, and what our goal at Land and Liberty Coalition is to do, is to protect property rights and to protect farmers. I heard a little bit today about farmland preservation, concern about preserving farmland. The biggest loss on farmland is actually farmers going out of business due to, well, there's a sort of things. I'm a farmer myself. I can tell you, I don't have, I don't own a lot of land. I own about a hundred acres. My family altogether owns about four hundred acres. People like myself are running out of options, running out of options to continue with the family farm. So I have one of two choices. They either lose that family farm or, and it doesn't exist for me because I don't, you know, they're not gonna put solar on my particular property because there's not an opportunity there. But a lot of farmers like myself say, I can put solar on that property, use that income from solar to then levelize the income from farms, which goes up and down and up and down, especially considering the farming aspect of weather, which changes year by year. So this is critically important to build product areas to protect farmers and to protect farmland. Because without this, you're gonna see more farms go out of business and then their land get cut up into little five and ten acre parcels and more development takes place on it. The other thing I wanted to make mention is about the question about home values. We've actually done studies on the home values in Lapeer. I can tell you, there's been no effect on home values whatsoever in Lapeer County in and around the project. We have the largest solar project in the entire state of Michigan currently, so we do have something to build on. The last thing I wanted to make mention of is the question about people seeing it, people worrying about, you know, oh, gosh, we have to see it. Some of you may have seen Lapeer County projects, say, well, you can see it right there in front of the road. What you see on the freeway is only ten percent of the project. Most of the project you don't even see because of the screening requirements that were put in place. From my understanding, you guys have adequate screening requirements and within five years has, heck, there's people in Lapeer who don't even understand how big the project actually is because it's been screened so well. So as long as you have proper screening requirements and you keep in mind the property rights of those local farmers, I think it's gonna be a good ordinance. And that's why I wanted to just stress over and over again, farmers have property rights to do with their land what they want to do with their land. And if you don't allow it happening, a lot of these farmers go out of business, you're gonna have less farmland and less preservation and more urbanization, which I think everybody in this room probably disagrees with. That's all. Thank you.
They already spoke, Alan, so we'll go to somebody else and just on the solar. We'd like to speak now. We'd like to speak now.
Sure, why not? We're at our one, two, three, zero, zero Townsend Road. Screening, yeah, I know of Metamora, I can, if I go up that way, you, all you see is fields, there is no screening. So I don't know how well that's gonna work and some people say you paid to show up opportune times. Also, the Martin Marietta Cement Quarry, yeah, that somehow got turned into a nature preserve, some kind of tax write-off, I'm sure. And they really have a plaque up their nature preserve right where they dumped all the chemicals.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Stol and one oh one six two North Ann Arbor Road, Myland Township. If you're gonna do a solar field, keep it all together and consolidate in one area, not set it all over the whole township?
Just comment, it seems like. Thank you. Let's go next. I seen it.
I was actually quite shocked to find out that the farmers were very supportive of solar. On some of the first meetings that I went to on the township, in Myland Township, I was up in arms, I was ready to fight to the death of the farmers. And the farmers were the ones that told me, well, no, we want this. You know, this is what we want to do with our land. You know, I mean, if we can't farm it, it's not, he was just saying, you know, we've got some income coming in, it's a sure thing for a while, it's, you know, our kids can take it from, you know, your thumb or whatever. But, I mean, I was just, my jaw dropped when I heard that. So it's something to think about.
I've not seen any hands, don't be bashful. Go ahead, back there, sir.
From Oscar Pumpono. Solar, solar power and wind power is not the answer. You know, it's, people need to do the research more. Solar doesn't produce the amount of energy that everybody thinks it's gonna produce. You know, I just did a big project for a guy who actually works for DPD, so I asked him about this because what's going on in our township, Myland Township, nine hundred acres. And he said, nine hundred acres isn't gonna produce that much power. He said, follow the money. He said, look at the center of Michigan, exactly, where all the wind towers are at. Why would you put wind towers in the center of a state when all the wind's on the west side of the state? Because it's about money. It's about grants and government. Well, now the people can't stand half. He goes, do you know where all the power comes from, from the west side of the state? The Detroit River. Water energy is where the most energy comes from. Solar energy is because the government is giving money because of the Green New Deal to supposedly provide jobs. But he says what it does, it bankrupts farmers. He says, because what happens is, they put, they hire contractors to put the solar panels in, don't pay the contractors. Where do you think it's leaned? The landowner. Landowner can't pay the bill. Who takes over the property? The state. Who reaps the benefits then? The state. If you want to make money off your property, you own five hundred acres, sell it at six thousand an acre if it's good farmland, that should be enough money to retire. Invest it right, you can retire. They're promising you money. So you're blindsided. The deal looks too good to be true. It probably stinks on the back end. But do you know how much power it takes to charge a one-hour car, electric car like you were saying? To pull up.
I have no idea.
To a thing, to charge a car, quick charge, one hour. You can power one business building in the downtown Ann Arbor area.
Mega.
So you tell me nine hundred acre solar field? My house is completely solar. My house is completely solar. But in the winter, I have to heat it with propane and wood stove. Because there's not enough power, so I said, why don't they put solar in, like Arizona, the desert? He says, because it's too hot. Solar panels get too hot, can't generate the energy. So now they're coming after our states, which, like he said, we don't have enough sunny days. I can't even heat my house and do what I wanna do in the winter months, because there aren't enough power for my solar panels. So it's just something to think about.
My name's John Spence, six zero nine zero, my own fill road. I, uh, bought property over there about six years ago. Actually, due to you guys' ordinances, that, that place was almost a landfill in itself, and it was never taken care of. So I spent most of four years cleaning that thing up, moving trash and getting things out, eight semi-loads I hold out of there. Whole house actually tore down. Ordinances need to be worked on. The large-scale ordinance, well, for solar, what's, is there any ordinance for large-scale industrial solar? No amount in acres that can be done? Not in London Township? I think that's a problem, if you guys ask me. How many acres would you like to see? That could be divvied up exactly. There should be an ordinance for how many acres should be allowed. There's plenty of farmers here, and I get that, and I'm with whoever said it before. If farmers wanna pay out, or, you know, get, get solar, that's, that's fine, that's your option, but you also gotta deal with people around you that do care about seeing things. I don't wanna see a twenty-foot berm around me either, I don't, I don't wanna see solar in my, in my, you know, neighboring properties. I do think there is good green energy, there are, you know, feasible options, but those could be residential things, they don't need to be industrial things. We don't need it here in London Township, we're not, we're not in Ann Arbor Township. There should be something that, you know, could be open, wide open. Work on being something that's smaller, sure, and ordinance is around.
You already gave your three minutes, up to Ms. Shields. And I didn't see seven hands, so we'll let you go.
Again, I live one oh one, two four grams. I happen to own this little jewel piece of property that state just bought everything around me. I'm not gonna see a solar panel. I'm not gonna see a windmill. None of those are gonna come around my property. My property's not my concern. My property has contaminated water from a previous mistake. Okay? So I have my water shipped in. We voted on pipes to come into this township, it got voted down. Was I the only one that noticed that all of a sudden water companies that delivered, got consolidated in the one unit? Price went up, weekend deliveries got cut. There's a few independents still out there, but they're not there like they used to be. Why? Because they had their plan shot down. Infrastructure in this company, or in this country, has gone to hell. Look at Flint. Look at Detroit. Do we wanna be on that list in thirty years? Who's gonna maintain this stuff? Okay? How much taxes are they gonna pay for this property that they're gonna be using? Is it gonna be taxes equivalent to mine? Are you gonna pay for each, every structure on that property? No. I'm done.
Thank you. What'd you say your name was again, sir?
Leon Blackburn, junior.
Hi, my name's Jesse Carpenter, I'm, uh, also one of these guys from Augusta Township. We've been fighting this large-scale solar for, I don't know, a year and a half now or so. It's been an ongoing battle, it's consumed most of our lives, because our township has a large-scale solar ordinance that allows this to be put in under a special agency for that. The problem that you run into is that, once you allow this on AG one and AG two, it opens up your whole township. Because most of London Township is AG one and AG two. And so, what we found is, they will ask for this, but then as soon as you give them this, they want that. Then once that's there, they want the next. There's no real regulation on where it starts and stops. So, you guys are kinda opening Pandora's box here, if you allow it on AG one and AG two. And I don't think there's, like everybody said, solar is not efficient, it really isn't, it's, what we found is about twenty-four to twenty-five percent efficient. It's, it's not really suited for our state, but it's, uh, it's, like somebody else brought out, it's, there's a lot of tax breaks, a lot of benefits, you know, where all these companies have just sort of rallied up, and they're now pushing the solar to all these small townships, and it's... Once they get it in, who is there to police it and regulate it and everything else? 'Cause after it's in, it gets sold to DTE, and basically any promises that Whitetail Solar, Rain Gear Power, Azealia Power, any of these companies make with you, are going to be basically a deal between you and the solar company, and then once DTE takes it over, there's really no recourse that you have to go after them. So, what we've found is they will promise you, you know, I think there was nineteen lists of bigger setbacks, berms, all kinds of mosquito control, taking care of the ponding water, but it's impossible request, but they've agreed to most of them. Because they don't care about the township, they just want it pushed through. They'll tell you whatever you wanna hear to get it pushed through. And so, basically, you gotta really read into what they're telling you, because it's, it's pretty shady. And, um, if you really look at the tax revenue you're gonna get off of it, Augusta Township stands to make twenty-four thousand dollars the first year. And like this lady said, they wanna put it all on PA one sixteen ground. And once they do that, they would like to turn all that ground into PA one sixteen, so your tax revenue is just gonna go from, from measly twenty-four thousand down, and it's, you're gonna wind up getting nothing out of it. You might wanna think about it.
Brian O'Shea from Azalea Solar, I did email some comments ahead of the meeting, and I brought copies.
Unless you already have copies, I wasn't sure.
You, you, okay, then I don't need to, need to get, get the chat. Um, I just wanted to address a couple of the comments that, uh, that were made. Number one, I think, you know, uh, we've been discussing this ordinance, I think, for just about two years now, so there's been lots of these meetings, lots of questions back and forth, uh, from planning commission, from members of the public, uh, this is the third public hearing on this topic. I'm not tired of the questions, we can keep answering more questions. Um, and, you know, new people come to these meetings that haven't heard that some of these topics have been discussed before, ranging from, you know, decommissioning, to, uh, you know, soil testing, to road repair, uh, and a lot of these topics we have talked about before. Um, there's been a lot of questions lately about, uh, taxation, I think, you know, the gentleman just now, uh, made a comment about, you know, once solar panels would be in, that the property could be switched back to PA one sixteen, and somehow we wouldn't pay taxes. Um, that's not how PA one sixteen works with solar, uh, solar and PA one sixteen ground pauses the tax agreement, so that farmer cannot get that tax credit while solar is on that property, pays full, normal, real property taxes on the land, as well as personal property taxes that the solar company has to pay on each and every solar panel, inverter, post, road, the whole, uh, shebang. All of that is, you know, property that's taxed, and we would pay taxes to the township, to the school districts, to county services, you know, all local...
Excuse me, this is not for him to pronounce solar, this is for the audience, for the residents.
Well, it's a public...
He can have three minutes.
Hey, I...
He's still got one minute.
But, but, that's what's done on a special use permit here.
Can we get his address? Minnesota, Minnesota. Yeah, you got a minute, or you can...
Uh, whatever, uh, point I wanted to address is, I think it's a valid concern that, hey, you know, should we allow solar everywhere in the township, should we narrow down and focus where it wants to be? Uh, the township did in the public hearing on whether there should be a solar overlay. And again, I'm just gonna repeat, we have no position on whether you do a solar overlay or don't do a solar overlay. I mean, you do what makes sense for you, uh, township. We're only working in a very small portion of the township, right next to the transmission lines, uh, above London and Old Strander roads, that's the only part of the township that we're working in. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to close on, just for, you know, for me personally, I mean, I've been coming to these meetings for, for about two years, I've been engaging with landowners in the community for the better part of two years. Uh, you know, for me personally, you know, I do enjoy this community, I've spent a lot of time in this community, I've gotten to know a lot of folks, um, and so this isn't just, you know, me coming in here trying to build a project, we really do want to do this the whole way.
This is the first I've heard of it.
So, he's, he's been here promoting and telling the planning commission how to do the ordinance.
What you're gonna do?
All right.
Finish my minute here, but, so I, I do appreciate the opportunity to engage with the township over the past couple of years. You got our comments, if you have other questions, you have to address them, and if anyone here has questions about solar in general, once we hear the last... If one of my listeners is taken, I'll just be here after the meeting.
He can have five, three minutes. I'll give him my three minutes.
All right.
Okay, and I'm Nick Strahl, one one five five oh, Dennison Road, Mylan. Everybody here, I believe, is here for a reason. I'm here for a reason, and that reason is, I was born and raised down the road. I've been here for sixty years, I just turned sixty years old. I'm here and I stayed here because of one reason, because it's country. I was born and raised in the country, all my relatives lived around me, so I buy forty acres in my township. Why? So my kids can be around me on my farm. So now what's gonna happen? I'm gonna have solar panels around here, you know? Where does Mr. Apex, where does he live? Minnesota. Put him there. You know? Did he grow up in, in the city? If he grew up in the country, he would know what we're all worried about. He's all about the dollar. I don't wanna look out my window and say, hey, there's a, you know, solar panel, and then they're squeaking at night because they move every thirty seconds from there. You ready? Or, I'm gonna lay there with my windows closed and the air conditioner on, but I don't like doing that. You know, because I bought in the country to be in the country. And, and that's why I think most of the people here are from Mylan, they're from, uh, Maylie, they're from London Township. Why are they from there? Because they wanna live in the country. You know, these, these people don't wanna live in the city, or they would've moved. I could've moved, I could've moved for sixty years, but I elected to stay in the country. So now what's gonna happen? I got a house that they're taxing me at about six hundred thousand dollars value. You think I can sell that? I ain't gonna be able to sell that, my, uh, panels all around my house. That ain't gonna happen. I understand like farmers want it, I'm understanding they're getting a thousand bucks an acre. Well, are those farmers gonna stay there? Are those farmers gonna sell their pieces and go down to Florida? You know, I've talked to a couple farmers, oh, yeah, I can retire. Well, yeah, you can retire, but now I can't. Because I can't sell my house, I can't do anything there. You know, so, all I gotta say is, the people here, and everybody here, is here for one reason. They were here because they were born here, or they moved here because of the country. We didn't move here because, hey, we're gonna have solar panels. So, you know, that's, that's all I gotta say, I'm not gonna say anything good or bad, I'm just gonna say reality, you know?
Claire Ostrander, one zero one two nine Dundee, Azalea Road, uh, Maylie, Mylan Township. I am eighth generation of living in Mylan Township, right where I'm at, where I've lived my whole life and all my ancestors before me. I own two centennial farms in Mylan Township, homes and land. I am in full support of the solar project, I have met with my attorney, I have reviewed the contract with my attorney extensively, to ensure that I wasn't getting into a situation that would turn out bad. I am not moving to Florida, I'm staying right here, and I am passing this on to my son, who will take over when my husband and I are gone. This gives us the opportunity to keep our farm in our family like we want it to, I don't wanna sell it, I don't want six thousand dollars an acre so I can move away, that's not the point. The point is that we have the opportunity to diversify, to be able to use our farmland and keep it in the family for something other than cash crops that only, running it out only pays the taxes and insurance. Thank you. Excuse me?
Run it over Strander, Mylan Township. I got a picture here. I want you guys to look at it. I'll be glad to show it. That's Purdue University. They have solar above their tractor, they are farming underneath solar. What are you guys gonna do when the farmers see that they're gonna be able to make money from the solar and their crops at the same time? The farmers are gonna dictate it's coming. And that's what's gonna happen. Thank you. Trust me, sell my property again, Tim.
Rick Hannah, one hundred thirty on Henry in London. In relation to this gentleman's, uh, statement, his photo with the tractors underneath of the, uh, the grid there, um, that brings to mind one point that's gonna touch on this, uh, document, that the height limitations... Are like twelve feet, I think it was. That's not gonna get tracked.
Well, we have tractors that can go one or two foot, I don't know about you, but...
All right.
I'll bet.
Yeah, ma'am. Well, I'll get you next. Go ahead, you're fine, Barb.
So, the gentleman from Azalea Solar...
Yeah, do we have your name, ma'am?
Uh, Holly.
Holly.
You can't require addresses, by the way, so if anyone is uncomfortable reading your address, you cannot require any address.
So what's your last, we just wanna know where you live, are you, uh-huh?
I'm in London Township.
Okay, that's all right.
All right, that's fine, but nobody else has to read their address. Um, Azalea Solar asked, we had some questions, um, how much did Azalea Solar offer to pay for that mailer that went out in the township recently? Did they offer to pay anything for that?
No.
No.
Oh, okay, just curious, um, also, this is all recorded, this is all recorded, all of you, whether you're board members, planning commission, whatever, all of you are on record. You allow this to go through, and any of these concerns that people, legitimate concerns that people have brought up, come true, it will be our mission to make sure that is your legacy for what you've done for London Township. That you are the ones who allowed all this to take place, if any of these things come true, there are residents here from Mylan Township, from Augusta, from York, last time there was purity, all telling us, be warned, there are issues. We wish we weren't in this situation. You got one guy from Lapeer who showed up to say, hey, no, it's great, do it.
Yeah.
You don't find that strange?
Yeah, I do that.
I find that a little too strange.
I'm gonna read for four, I'm just gonna wait for...
Hour and a half, hour and a half, right. So, uh, yeah, so I just wanted to make that clear. Right, right. And so, also, for anyone who is questioning any one's motives here, everyone sitting up there, and everyone who's on the board are public officials, which means all of their emails, all of your text messages, all of your VCC or CCC, and all of your documentations are, are open up to Freedom of Information Act requests, which are free to submit. You can submit any FOIA request you want to get any notifications of any documentation or communications that they've had with Azalea Solar, or with any other solar company, or with one another, if you wanna know if there's anything else going on that's motivating you other than the best interest of the township, which is your job to do.
Absolutely.
Yes, Henley.
I'm Barb Henley, um, one three oh nine five Tunnel Hill Road. And I wanna know, I've, I've listened to all of this, and I'm not really, I was, wow, we're gonna get solar, that's gonna light up my house and my neighbor's house. And then I started doing a little research and listening to people, and it's not so. So what benefit is this solar farm, or whatever you're calling it, going to do for this township? So why do we want to bring nothing into our township? So why do we want to bring nothing into our township? Yeah, but still, but still, that's, I mean, yeah. I've been here a long, long time and I love it, you know? And I, I can't see, it's like you say, looking out a window seeing these big ugly things all around. They'll run the deer away, everything. Thank you.
My name's Amanda Stacey, resident of London Township. I really, I, I do, I'm, I'm one of those double advocates. I, I understand, I understand the farmers who want to use their fields and get this money. And I understand everybody else who don't want to look at it. Me personally, I wouldn't wanna look at it either. But I've been taking a tally of everybody that spoke here tonight. You have twelve absolute no's. You have a couple of people who see major, major things wrong with the ordinance that is sitting in front of you. You have just a few people, three people, who were kind of like myself, you know, that, that kind of in-between. And you had four yeses, two from the same family, one who's trying to put an application in, and some guy from a county way far away that, yeah, just, I'd say in the neighborhood. So what, what outweighs here? That is what you need to look at. Out of all these people that showed up, whether they're your constituents or they're, they're residents of fellow townships or whatever. They came here for a reason. And to me, it's a very loud no.
Who are your voters?
Go ahead.
I've been knocked in London Township for the last three to four weeks. I've got residents, many, over a hundred people that are definitely no for this. I, uh, also Mylan Township. Also, anybody like to, uh, note a solar sign, come see me after the meeting.
Alright, who wants to speak next?
Okay. Sharon Werster, uh, Mylan Township. I, I just wanna let everybody know that there's Hendershot Road on M fifty. You turn, you go south and you'll see a nice solar field. It's about fifty acres. And it looks bad. It looks like a prison. I mean, um, I did talk to the, the homeowner and the homeowner stated that he's, actually, his house is for sale right now because he does not. Oh, did you? Okay, well then you know, yeah. So, um, he, he is very upset about it. Um, it's ten, ten feet off of his property line. I don't know how he's gonna sell this, but it's, it's surrounded. And he will lose money on it. Um, so with that being said, when you're looking at it, you, you need to go look at it. I don't know if any of you guys have really been by it or not. You will see that it's, it's, it's really not a big thing. Um, been there for over a year and a half to two. They have not did anything to the roads that they're supposed to. The trees are about, yeah, the trees are put tall. Yeah, and they're about twenty, twenty-five feet apart. I don't know. But if you go out there, you will get a reality check on what's coming in or what's trying, I should say.
The fence is ten feet tall.
Yeah, and the fence is ten feet tall and it's just, it's just a mess. So, um, with that being said, I appreciate everybody coming and voicing their feelings. And tomorrow night is London Township's, uh, planning commission and everybody's welcome. And so we can stick together arm to arm and get this out of our way so we can have a great summer and, yes, have a nice summer.
I'm looking around the room to see if there's any new fe- faces. Have you spoke yet? I don't think so. There you go. You're up.
Richard Hamel, I'm also from Augusta Township. Um, I guess to elaborate, I would implore you, the planning commission, to definitely go. I would go to Chia Wasi, go to some of the bigger ones and see what's truly been done. Get an idea of what those people are going through up there. And then also educate yourselves to know what the taxes are truly gonna be, what you are gonna get out of this, from the township, out of this project versus the upset people that you're gonna have, because you will. Good luck.
Thank you.
I'm looking for, anybody else wanna speak? Before we start going back around twice, before we start going back around again? Alright. The gentleman behind Amanda.
My name's Scott DiCiana. I'm a neighbor from the city of Monroe. Uh, I work at a company called the Ben Tower Industries. We're a heavy steel fabricator here in the county. Uh, employ probably about, uh, employees of probably about ninety percent from the county. Uh, I'm here because I'm curious about, uh, where solar's going. Uh, we make, uh, large diameter steel products, wing towers, we make reports for C. I, I hear the opinions as well in the room. Um, we make, we also make thirty, sixty thousand, ninety thousand gallon cookers. So we're a fabricator that's curious about keeping our employees working, keeping local people working. And we are, uh, a product of economic development. We've been in business for since two thousand eight. And I'm here, uh, in favor of economic development. I'm not here to help weigh in on your ordinance. I'm here for, in favor of economic development. Try to keep my folks, which means some of your family members, your kids, work at our company. We have a strong tie with, uh, with Monroe County Community College. We hire directly from their welding and NBT program. And it's in my interest as a, as a, a county resident, uh, to make sure that our company stays open. And this opportunity with solar development coming to the county and the state is an opportunity for us to keep our lifestyle. That's all I have to say. I'll have to answer any questions after the meeting if you would like to.
Well, I have to tell you guys, they tractor parked.
Alright. Anybody else wanna speak up? Saying none, I guess Amanda, you can go again.
I know, I didn't use my full three minutes. That's why I just. No, I don't, I don't need it. I just wanted to say, last week, I took a drive down to Florida. Very nice, by the way. Much better than here. However, going through Georgia, there were hundreds and hundreds of acres of solar farms along seventy-five. It was the ugliest thing I've ever seen. I don't know what's on the other side of those solar, the, those solar panels. I have, I, I, literally, all I could see were solar panels. In fact, I took video of it and everybody's welcome to look at it. It, I don't know if there were houses on the other side or what those people had to deal with either. The, the fight that they fought. I have no idea. Looking at it from the freeway, yeah, I could see that. Everybody's just driving by it. But we don't know what's on the other side.
One more thing today. One is about, uh, farming, which, under the panels. You know, that was one of the things we were presented with too, and giving pictures of goats under the panels. For example, there's some other lower crops. And it turned out later, they want no crops under it because it makes dust on the panels or any kind of thing you're doing it. They hardly wanna mow it for the same reason. Then it, this is a problem as well. So the idea that it's gonna get some kind of farm use as well unless you put it up high enough, I don't see how that can happen. That's just not what they're, the, the solar company had a lot of propaganda, of pictures of things that will be. Said, right, and look at Chia Wasi. It's always gonna be all trees all around it. You know, half of them are dead if they're there at all. It's just, it's worth checking into. The one megawatt of solar power is enough to do, I think, a hundred and ninety houses. We were a hundred and twenty megawatts up there. That was enough for twenty-three thousand plus. In the course of twenty years, that was two and a half billion dollars, I think I corrected, I estimated. It's not what they're telling you. They'll tell you whatever it takes to get in here and then they're gonna be here. If you think it's gonna be gone in twenty years, that's a fantasy. Once DTE owns that property, unless power comes free, that is not disappearing. And the farmers do have, if people do have a right to do what they want, I, you know, it's, it's a, it's a conflict. I know it is. But just to think that it's gonna be only a short period of time and then they'll be gone, or no matter what the decommissioning plan is. The fact is, it's not gonna be decommissioned. It's gonna be kept up the whole time. And if you're already spending up there with a hundred and twenty million dollars to build it, they're not, they're not stopped at the, you invested a hundred and twenty million. It's all profit pretty much after that. You're just gonna stay there. The taxes, what he's talking about, is absolutely not true. You need to dig into that deeper. I can tell you, we thought the same thing. They sold us a nice bill of sale and you start looking at it and it does not turn out that way. You know what? Really good advice, go to some of these other townships, talk to some of the supervisors there or their commission or the head person. Say, hey, look, how do you feel about it? I can tell you, since I've been to a lot of these meetings, there's not one I've been to that says, yeah, we're glad that we have it here. Every one, even the ones that have, already have one through, say, man, I wish we wouldn't have opened a can of worms by allowing this in the first place. And I suggest you just to pick that ordinance out, you know? And I, and call it what it is. It's a large-scale solar industrial facility. I mean, it's not, you know, the, the, the idea was to have some active farming. This, the, your, um, master plan, I imagine, goes into the same thing. Open spaces were important and some active farming. Well, it is, solar power is collecting is not active in any way. And it's certainly not active farming. Like I said, we came, I'm, I'm here because I wish someone would've went to my township when they were first talking about this. And farmers, they got their issues, I know, but they chose that path. They can do, and how much tax dollars are gonna be if they sold their five acres off at a time and built new houses there? It's certainly gonna be more than twenty-four thousand, which I can tell you is, is, is what we found out that, that Augusta Township is gonna get before it goes into PA one sixteen, and he's pulling crap about that. That's how, you know, it wasn't in the first place even gonna be allowed on PA one sixteen. The governor changed their mind along the way. I think, you know, just check out some other townships before you get, decide something to do.
Thank you.
So I do wanna make a comment that, um, on the Azzalia Power website, I did ask. On the Azzalia Power website, I did ask that copies of their environmental impact statement be brought to this meeting. Uh, I didn't see any on the table. Um, I also asked for any permits that they've applied for or will apply for or have already received be brought to the meeting. I didn't see them on the table. Um, there are concerns. I mean, we don't know if there are any endangered species here, plants, animals. Um, you know, does the Indiana bat come up here and roost in the area? How will the solar array affect that? Um, I read that the heat from the solar arrays can actually be detrimental to the bees in the area and other insects. And we know that without bees, there's no farms. Also, there's no mention of how they'll do any water management in the area, you know, during construction, there has to be water management. The water table here is very high. It would be interesting to see how they plan to do that, you know, are they gonna have to discharge it? Are they gonna have a stormwater permit plan that people are going to be here to inspect all the time? Are they gonna use panels that are only approved, uh, by different agencies? Or are they gonna use, are we going to say that they have to use the silicon versus the cadmium panels? And as far as, you know, not allowing any farming because of dust, I can tell you how they're gonna get rid of plants. It's gonna be herbicides in the right away, applied several times a year. I mean, not that the farmers don't do that, but it's gonna be different kinds. So there's a lot of questions that need to be answered before you can determine good, bad, you know, do the pros outweigh the cons? What glitz is it gonna do to the township? Nobody has answered that yet.
It seems like we're always fighting something. I'm, I'll be eighty years old in July. I married this man, I married this man sixty years ago. And he's still with me, believe it or not. But I moved here when I was fourteen. I graduated from Mylan High School in nineteen sixty. Moved away for fifteen years, came back because we liked it so well around here. We bought on Wells Road, the house burned down. We built a new house because we wanted to stay here. And everybody knows me and knows I like a good fight. I have helped fight MCATs with the deep-weld injection. I was part of ICAG that closed down London Sand. I was part of the wholesome, uh, committee that helped educate them that they wanted to move out of our area with their pollution. Then they tried to put a railroad, a thousand-acre railroad intermodal yard across the street from me. Now I got a man that loves trains. I'm, I'm surprised he hasn't had a caboose tattoo. But I fought that because I told him, I said, you know, I mixed up here. I got a man that loves trains and I don't want that damn yard across the street from me. Well, they left. Then we had a few peaceful years. Now we're back to fighting again. What is it about our township that everybody thinks they gotta come in here and mess it up? We moved here for a reason. We elected the board and they appointed you. And the board is supposed to do what we want, not want the solar people. I object. In twenty twenty, when you guys started this, these guys told you, and you admitted, Dan, that you guys didn't know a thing about solar at First Public Health.
And educated.
Yes. And so these guys told you how to do the ordinance. And just, I even put, it's in the minutes, if you look back, that I even said, I've never seen an ordinance made to suit the applicant. In this case, that's exactly what happened. So don't take what these guys, when they come for the special use permit, then listen to them. In the meantime, listen to your citizens. Thank you. He doesn't speak often, so listen.
I'm eighty-two years old and I can say that this guy right here is at a mouthful. When they got something coming in like that, you, you can believe, only believe half of what you hear. Half of what you, these guys here, you can't believe what they say. I'll tell you that right now. This guy here is at a mouthful here.
I'm saying it like it is. I'm down here.
You just said it like it is.
No, I care about this area.
That's right, this guy. He's got a.
It's easy to get snow.
Gotta write that one down. He don't speak very often.
That's right.
Very good.
Alright. Give it your, Brian.
Yeah, I will. Uh, Brian O'Shea, Azzalia Solar. I actually just wanted to, to hear Mary say, Mary, I did see, to the board, I did see Mary's Facebook comment and I forgot to respond to it. Uh, but we do, uh, don't have an environmental impact statement or anything because we don't have a design. Uh, we're, you know, we're waiting for the ordinance to get done, be able to design the actual project. Uh, all of the, all of that environmental permitting does go through, through Eagle, the EGLE at the state. So if we had any disturbance to a wetland or anything like that, all of that would have to be permitted, uh, through the state. We do presence-absence surveys for endangered species. We do a few technical studies. We do a whole range of studies as part of designing this project. A lot of that is still underway and some of it will be pending once there are ordinances and we can actually move forward with the design of the project. So I'm happy to talk with anyone afterwards if they wanna ask other questions about that. Thank you.
I'm ready to listen to anybody.
Why don't you just have a bow down? Send the letter out to everybody in the township and have them bow down. You will watch the shit, we won't. I can see, uh, over three-quarter of people in here don't want it. They never send others out to nobody.
Okay, I got one more thing to say. I hear these guys talking about the taxes that these companies are gonna be paying here.
I hear these guys talking about the taxes that these companies are gonna be paying here. Seriously, guys? How many companies in this country really pay taxes? How many aren't getting tax breaks from the communities we're moving into, and actually demanding? So, I don't know, that kinda falls on deaf ears here. I think I've learned from the past.
Aaron O'Scanner, one oh one two nine, Dundee, Azalia Road. Um, you wanna talk about the past? Well, one thing that I don't quite understand is, in America, we kinda have private landowner rights. And that's one thing that's being stepped over a lot here. You know, you wanna say everybody gets a vote on it, but not everybody has that land that they've paid taxes on for how many generations? You know, it doesn't really add up how you can say, oh, well, I want you to plant tulips in your yard, but you don't pay my taxes. Tell me how that makes sense.
Tulips are a lot prettier.
Yeah, we all have rights, but you don't pay my taxes on my land, so where do you get the right to tell me what I can do on my land?
Wherever you get the money.
I said, we're not gonna do that.
He owns his own place.
Who's got?
Don't go why.
Yeah, and yours isn't involved, is it?
I see Pam's hand right there, let's, let's, let the lady speak.
Question for Mr. O'Shea, I just can't tell my notes right now. The perimeter of the, um, our board is if you want the trees and the shrubs, could you review again how tall they will be and how far apart they are? You know, you were gonna plant wild trees, so they're all so tiny, but.
Is it, it's in the ordinance?
See, we, we worked on our ordinance, and we thought we had screening that was gonna block out the solar panels. So it wouldn't be what Amanda's seen driving down the freeway and things like that. He probably can't decide exactly how to do it until the ordinance would get approved, so he knows how to plant it.
Well, we had numbers, though, and we've got, you got your notes.
Yeah.
I thought you might know right off the top of the head, since it's gone over.
The, the green, the green screening must be the same height of what the maximum tilt of the array is, is what we go in our ordinance. And so that way, whether some, somebody comes in at fifteen feet, the green screening has to be fifteen feet, if it's twenty feet, they have to put the screening up to twenty feet. If it's a ten-foot array, they have to put in a ten-foot screen for the green, green light. Yeah, that, right, right. Okay, and then, okay, you're asking for when they plant it, or when it's mature?
Both.
Both.
Okay.
It's on page five. Okay, thank you. Um, Sharon Worser, um, I was just, I went to the St. Clair, um, meeting, and it was very interesting how, how, um, they had like a drone or something, and it was like at the beginning of it. And you didn't see anything but just green, you know, and he's just explaining and stuff, and then all of a sudden, he just came right up onto the solar field. And I'm thinking, well, that's interesting, because by looking at it distant-wise, you could not see nothing, okay? So if that was in the middle of the field and you could not see it, hmm, interesting. But every, every solar field that I've seen, or solar farm, you can see it, and it's like twenty feet tall. I mean, I, those, those panels were huge out there. Um, so that, I just wanted to make sure that what you've seen at the St. Clair meeting, it was like, wow, this is kinda interesting, because they had it all like, uh, burned up or whatever. But you could not see it at all, until you came up on it, I mean, you'd have to, it was like a drone, to me. But, um, just wanted to put that into speculation, that the typical solar field or farm does not look like what St. Clair.
So I guess when you start taking your jetpack to work, you'll be able to see it.
Exactly, if that's what you wanna see.
They're never gonna give us jetpacks. People can barely drive on a road. Unfortunately, we don't have hills out here, and maybe we.
And that's another thing, there's no residential around it either. It was like in the middle of a field with no residential.
All right, anybody else? I appreciate everybody's comments, that's what this is for, if you have any.
Um, I know she's not necessarily supposed to speak, but at the last meeting, I think Lisa Moore talked a little bit about stuff going on in Land Salem, about there not being the tax benefits that everyone's saying may be a pro in this situation. I don't know if we, if we allow her to, can she speak to that?
She could speak as a resident.
I wouldn't, trust me.
There's more information to be coming in the future. How's that?
Well, that's, I mean, say this to people, then, right? I mean, if there's, if that's one of the only pros for the whole township is the tax revenue, and we don't have an answer on that, I'd say that's a big question. When you, it's blocked, the same with the environmental studies, they're not done yet, big question mark, come back when they're done.
Okay, the corporations don't make that project.
Oh, no, I know, no, no, I know, but people are saying that might be a, a side of it.
You know who does pay taxes? Marijuana owners pay taxes.
All right, it's a different subject.
There you go.
I seen another hand over here. That'd be fine.
I just wanted to, um, mention for people that can't talk, that there's a six-month march later, that's, that you, maybe you didn't know that number one. We got time.
Yes, we do have. But we wanna have a good summer, too.
Right.
This isn't really related to solar or not solar, it's more or less just about being properly notified. I think I got my letter in the mail about a day about this current meeting, like, two days ago. I think it would be, I don't know, I don't know what it is, maybe my mail service comes slower than most people, but I don't know.
Everything in the mail has to go to Detroit and then come back, and it makes the process a lot longer, and something's going to happen.
It was posted in the paper, it was posted online in the website, which are all the things that are required by this. Understood, but if we're gonna get them in the mail, it'd be nice that it's posted, and people are notified before two days, that's all I'm saying for myself. Solar or not, you know, any kind of thing that I would like to be involved in this contest, which I would like to be, I don't care, I'll fight for it in two days.
All right.
Do we know that, we got a Christmas card about three weeks ago.
Yeah. And folks don't send checks in the mail anymore, is the best idea. Anybody else? Is there any other discussion?
We should make notes, that. Because we received a letter from Adrian Schultz, that the planning commission all received. We also received, well, we received Aretha Schill's letter, we got a copy of that. And then there's one from Kennedy, from Mylan Township, and then there's an unsigned one. Well, none says to the board. Yeah, this, this one doesn't have a name.
Yep, there is one with a name.
So, but that's, that's what we received, and then the one from Azalia, that, Mr. O'Shea referenced. This said, those will be part of the documentation of the public hearing.
Those should be read, so, oh, what's to be experienced during the public hearing? Is somebody going to read those aloud? Because I, you mentioned Azalia, Azalia gave you a letter, and I am very interested to hear what that actually says.
Mr. O'Shea referenced, thank you, what was in that?
Yep, you probably got a copy if you are. Well, I guess I can do this if you want, I can read these. All right. Um, hello, my name is Adrian Schultz, been a London Township president for eleven years. I've loved living here, but very concerned about the prospect of solar fields being built here. Not only worried about the multiple health hazards to my family and neighbors, but it also harms the environmental quality of our water, soil, air, wildlife, and overall rural fields that we all love so much. In addition to what I've mentioned, I will also decrease our property value as a homeowner, which bothers me greatly. I will be unable to make it to the township meeting on the seventh, but I'm hopeful this information is falling into your right hands, I can voice my concerns. I'll attach you find several documents, first document quotes on why solar farming is not a good use of agricultural land. And the four facts why are as follows. Solar farming will change the future productivity of the land. Because of this lost productivity and resulting changes in farming communities caused by the loss of the land, it is highly unlikely this land will never be farmed. You can be stuck with costs and decommissioning of these solar fields, solar farming is not a good use. The second attachment breaks down exactly what it would cost to re, and why to reclaim any land that is used as a solar field. And as you read it, it would be very costly for our township. The third document explains the potential cadmium tellurite environmental threat. And lastly, I've attached a link below the brief five-minute video further explaining why solar farms would be a det, detrimental addition to our beautiful township. Some of the highlights in the video are due to our limited capacity and best batteries currently available. After twenty years of research and millions of dollars in subsidies, solar and wind power only power three percent of the world's energy. That's because even with the best, most advanced battery system, the one that Tesla builds, it would take five hundred years for that factory to make enough batteries to store just one day's worth of America's electricity. And that's just a economic aspect. If you look at it from an environmental aspect, wind and solar systems and the batteries that come with them are made from non-renew, renewable sources. This means the amount of natural resources needed distributed to produce these systems and keeps them going is massive, and would hurt our world economy. In addition, it would also cause us to import from countries that are hostile to America and damage other countries that America wants to protect. Then it addresses the waste that will come from it. Wind, solar, and battery systems have a very short lifespan of only about twenty years, which means only twenty years, the disposal of worn-out solar panels will constitute over double the amount of today's global plastic waste. And that's not even addressing what wind and battery carnage will do to our land. We are taking millions of tons of waste that we will now have to figure out what to do with it not too far down the road. Lastly, the video talks about the wonderful alternative of hydro, hydrocarbons, which have already been using, and every day, we find cleaner and more accessible ways to continue to use them. So as I'm asking you to please think about it, when somebody mentions that wind and solar are a magical solution to all of our energy needs, and ask them if they have been made aware of the cost of it all. The cost to our environment, the cost to our lovely township, and the cost to the wallets of citizens who call London Township home. Thanks for your time, thanks for reading this. All right. This one's from Aretha. Thanks for reading it for me. All right, wanna read another one? I want everybody to quit talking. My name is Kevin Heath, and I'm a property owner in Mylan Township. I'd like to thank the planning commission members for work putting together your proposed ordinance. Done a lot of work to create a fair ordinance for everybody. I'd like to share some thought to consider when opponents try to tell you lies. PA sixteen doesn't matter, the people arguing do not know anything about PA one sixteen. This is meant to pervert, to preserve farming, not just farming. M-DART has approved solar being placed on our properties. Think about this, it is preserving farmland and the farmer. If the farmer has to sell in order to pay his property, it should be split into lots for development, and that's losing the land forever. PD one sixteen was designed to prevent that from happening. When the township loses land to places like a new high school, further future growth, in twenty, thirty, twenty-five or thirty years, this land can be reverted back to farming. There are extra provisions to help that and protect the properties. Vegetation that is required is the same as CRP program, and that the American taxpayers are paying farmers not to plant. Setbacks. The further you have setbacks on the property, the more you need to have for a solar project. These houses originally were part of the farm, or were split off or into lots, most likely to help make the farm payment. I can build a barn from a fence row to a fence row, and that's okay. Dairy or pig farm with a sewage pond, a greenhouse right next to a door, or a feed storage built with concrete walls, et cetera, these are all acceptable. The state of Michigan says that solar can be placed on farmland. The state of Michigan says we can drive at the age of sixteen if you meet all the requirements. The township doesn't decide. Why is this any different if they meet all the requirements? These residents moved to an ag district, we're not talking about a residential district. These residents shouldn't dictate what the setbacks are. Of course, you should be reasonable, but they moved to an ag area, I think this can be a reasonable compromise. The government pays the farmers occasionally not to plant crops when there is a surplus or some grains that go to waste. We can afford to take some of that farmland temporarily out of production. It's a fact that if DTE and consumers' public meet their requirements for solar, it only equals less than one percent of issues farmers. Lot coverage should not be an issue, and is considered farming. Nothing else on the farm deal deals with lot size. This also would not just require more land for the solar to be built, see setbacks above. While I agree it would be nice to have trees put taller than four foot, there is more likelihood of taller trees dying. The specialists should be considered if they have to replant dead trees every year if it defeats a purpose. Using a camera to check on field tile, starting the project, people that have, that don't farm have no clue how field tiles work. They just jump the bandwagon to add restrictions to make it difficult. First, the state regulates this. Farmers have diagrams where the tile are located, and they can use this to help know if they're even close to a tile. Plus, when the field tile gets cut off, or you have a washout, you can tell rather quickly. This issue can be addressed in the contract with the lessor and the lessee. People try to say that solar panels are hazardous, damage the soil, and several other myths. These have all been proven false. Eagle has materials showing that they are safe. Pollinators and grasses that are planted around the plant panels will help wildlife habitat. Bees, birds, rabbits, pheasants can nest, even deer can graze around the panels, this has been proven. I'm confident that you are reasonable enough to see through, yeah, the goals of those wanting to stop solar.
Just so you guys know, that's coming from a guy who's got three-quarters of Mylan Township, and is stood to solar.
The last one I have, since Aretha's graciously read hers for us. The London Township Board of Trustees, I'm confused as why you are determined to change the zoning ordinance to large, allow large solar farms. I do not see any residents from London Township that want this changed. Mostly, I see interested people from Mylan, who should have zero input in what we allow in our township. That being said, here, a few of my concerns. Property values. The negative effects of solar farms on property values are huge. I have done a lot of research on the pros and cons of living near a solar farm, and this is one constant that no one can argue or dismiss. Nobody wants to live in a place where trees are disappearing and solar panels are rising. It's one reason why property values drop automatically. Moreover, the health risks from the insulation, electromagnetic exposure, visual impact, solar panels glare, drinking water supply, poor water drain management, continuous noise during solar reproduction, generated light noise. drinking water supply, poor water drain management, continuous noise during solar reproduction, generator light noise, and habitat denigration. Habitat denigration, solar farms are not set in small amounts of land, they need to be extensive. So if you think a few farmers will end up policing their land, I'm afraid you're mistaken. These large corporations will completely change the landscape of our great community. Solar farms are slowly destroying the ecosystem. Every type of insect, land, bird depends on this ecosystem. London Township has an immense amount of wildlife. These farms will completely change or eliminate their habitat. Around current farms, people are starting to find dead bodies of animals and birds. While the reasoning is being explored, one thing they can be certain of is the panels that affect the sun's rays are intense and damage the animal's eyesight. In California, there's a large solar plant that incinerates up to six thousand birds every year. The panel attracts insects, and the insects, as well as the beams of sunlight, attract the birds. When the birds get too close, they are incinerated, they spontaneously burst into flames. Well, folks, I'm reading this, I'm not making this up. Sight of the birds is being fried to death is so common that the workers have nicknamed them screamers, because they leave tiny quips of white smoke behind as they burn up the sky, no wonder they die so young. I'm sorry. And while corporations says they're trying to solve this problem, they aren't doing anything. This is something that we want to deal with here in London Township. Bees will flourish, but they will, are the only wildlife that will be impacted in a positive way. Destroying the beauty of Mother Nature, as stated earlier, solar farm community, everything is large scale. It looks so bad, it destroys the beauty of the surrounding areas. Most solar panels are angled and placed in the best way to attract sun. People who live on the east side of the solar farm won't get a bad view, but the people on the west side are going to experience a terrible view. Radiation, the most dangerous effect of a solar farm in our neighborhood will be the negative impact on the human body. Living close to a solar farm reduces life expectancy dramatically. While the farm itself may or may not give off significant amount of radiation, the substation and the high voltage transmission lines will most definitely put the surrounding neighbors at risk for health issues. According to the World Health Organization, pregnant women near these fields found a significant and higher rate of miscarriage caused by electromagnetic field. And it's not just women they affect. These electromagnetic fields, electromagnetic fields can be, cause nerve and muscle stimulation and changes to the nerve cell excitability and any central nervous system. Potential long-term effects is also on childhood leukemia. We don't even get into the toxic chemicals that are used to clean the surfaces of the body. We don't have time. Solar panels and the related equipment produce hypersensitive waves. These waves are called electromagnetic waves. The wave is super strong and damages the environment, as well as those around it. There is no doubt, there is unhealthy for those living near a solar farm. People near solar farms get sick very quickly. Most of the time, people experience headaches, and the illness from these electromagnetic fields can cause, could be life threatening. The visual impact alone should be enough to deter any farm community. While I was doing my research, I found an article about Ann Arbor rejecting the ordinance. They spent months drafting, and because of the community impact on Ann Arbor, turned it down flat. Let's cut our losses and move on. These large corporations find some other victims other than the people of London Township. Any final comments? Amanda?
Just to reiterate, twenty-seven people, I'm not including the guy who's far away from home, or the applicant, okay? I'm excluding them. Twenty-seven people, including those letters, four are yes, that's it. Yes, and, and three of them are from the same place.
I'd like to thank the board members for taking the time to listen up.
Actually, we'd like to thank you guys for showing up. Makes our job difficult, but easier, so, we're getting hot, and the same thing you do, and hopefully you can come up with something that satisfies us in public, so.
So when will these questions and comments be addressed? Are they gonna be addressed before an ordinance is finalized? Is there gonna be a revision to the ordinance as written? What's the timeframe look like, and what are the next steps?
Well, at this point, the board passed a mark to him, so we got six months for it for him.
Are there gonna be any other meetings in that year?
I don't know, there'll probably be meetings, yeah, just for the meetings.
Well, it'll be placed on the agenda at some point in time, because there was such a huge volume of information shared tonight, and I took a lot of notes, and there's a lot of things that I'm gonna be doing, so checking on, backtracking, and I, the one that got me with incinerating birds. But aside from that, there was a lot of very good comments, and I had some great comments for tweaking what we did have, and some of the other questions, so, uh, no. Good, good comments. With that, I would move to close the public hearing.
Full support, bud.
Alright, moved by Mr. Darlin, supported by Mr. Zicksky to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion's here. Alright. Anything on the table?
It's not over, guys, because I got some work in the meeting.
Citizens' time. If you folks want to visit, would you please just exit the building, and you can visit outside all you want.
Does anyone else have any other concern regarding solar?
Hearing none? Looking for a motion.
That's all.
I did, and everybody stood up, started talking, so, I have now entertained the motion to close the meeting.
Can I just question something, should I just question these questions real quick?
Yes, you may.
Um, I do wanna say it is discourting to see that, um, it, we got a grant, the township got a grant from Azalea Solar in the amount of, what, seven thousand dollars, I believe? To me, it seems borderline bribe-ish, and I don't like it. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there, that I, I don't think it's in the best interest of the township with such monotony going on right now. I don't think it's in the best interest of the township, and I know you guys aren't in charge of accepting that grant or anything like that, but...
I don't think it's come through, it was, if I remember right, it was earmarked for something to do with the senior citizen center or something.
It's supposed to be a cleanup, I'm pretty sure.
There we go. Yeah, there it was.
Which, again, it, yeah, it's nice to get a grant, but because of everything that's going on, I, I don't think it's in the best interest of the township to accept it.
Alright, so noted. Is there any other citizens' comments?
I gave the, uh, planning commission another note, to look at, it's the changes that, um, needs to be reviewed, and so, I told you at the previous meeting, I would bring you a list of those.
Right.
And, um, of course, someone developed a few years ago with the pond, and that stuff, so I left that out. Then after we're done with that, we'll have to look and see how everything goes together, because the board hasn't totally approved those agreements of the, like, so.
Right.
Anyway, this is something.
Are there any other commissioner comments? Motion to adjourn. I've entertained the motion to adjourn by Vice Chairman Darlin.
I'll second.
Need a second to do it? Get there to force, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you for coming, both. Now you can stay inside and visit more form, folks.